Thank you very much. I'm over to it. The people who have the five legal board. I'd like to go over. Okay. I'm just trying to see. We'll talk after. Yeah. Okay. I don't want to sign in. I don't, what's going on here? Why don't I have my?
Oh, yeah. You don't need the Samsung one. Just, just do, you can click out of there. It's not letting you?
Relax.
Well, you clicked all the clickable things, so.
Here alone?
I think so. It's settled down for a few minutes.
What is our guy's name? The guy working with the committee? I was looking for his name.
Oh.
What is it? Todd?
Yes. Todd Hune. All right, I'll start. H U. H N. H N.
H N. Technology.
Recording in progress.
Okay, at seven oh one, I'll call today's council meeting June seventeenth to order. Can you take the roll call, please?
Davis. Lampy.
Here.
Berg.
Here.
Bart.
Here.
Blanke.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Arnett.
Pezzins.
Wetzel. Mildenhauer.
Okay, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll try to look both ways in the council. If we do a motion or second, if you just give me a hands up for someone I'm calling you. Minutes of council meeting on June third.
I'll move for their approval.
Is that reflection coming? Something's echoing back. Okay, so let's, uh, give me a hand up. It'd be easier so I don't have to be at the same time. Mr. Berg?
I'll move for adoption of the minutes.
Okay, and a second by Mr. Arnett. Okay. All those who are here say aye?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, next we have comments, suggestions from citizens present. Permit up to three minutes. The timer goes off, just can I finish your thoughts, please? Okay, ma'am.
Amanda Pilsner.
Thank you, Megan. State your name and address, please, ma'am.
Amanda Pilsner, one oh six Emerald Street.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I was just wondering why I was denied my liquor license. And I was told earlier today it was for something in twenty twenty-one that happened. And I was wondering why I received my first liquor license in twenty twenty-three, but it wasn't denied then, but it's denied now. So I, like, I really need my license to do my job. So I was just wondering what was the reasoning?
During the public comment time, Alderman and myself can't speak, just for you to talk to us. Um, I can, after me, I can talk to you a little bit, ma'am, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Reverend Dr. Christopher Ross?
My name is Reverend Dr. Christopher Ross. I live in Cottage Grove, but I serve here in Watertown as pastor of First Congregational United Church of Christ. My pronouns are he, him, his, and I am part of the local group known as Building a Welcoming Watertown, first begun by four Watertown area congregations. Once again this evening, we rise to speak because too many folks have been kept in the cold this past winter while the city has done far too little. While too many in the city you govern having frozen to death or come frighteningly close. And we challenge the frequent unwelcome message the city sends to supposed outsiders. When anyone finds themselves in danger of freezing to death, that's on all of us. A proposal for a community overnight shelter, warming shelter, based on a public-private partnership has now been submitted. And so, once again, we would like to remind you of some scriptural wisdom from the same source that so many of you claim to espouse. Psalm one thirteen, verse seven says, "God raises the poor from the dust and lifts the needy from the ash heap." Psalm one forty, verse twelve says, "I know that the Lord maintains the cause of the needy and executes justice for the poor." Psalm one forty-six, verses five through nine say, "Happy are those whose help is the God of Jacob, whose hope is in the Lord their God, who made heaven and earth, the sea, and all that is in them, who keeps faith forever, who executes justice for the oppressed, who gives food to the hungry. The Lord sets the prisoners free, the Lord opens the eyes of the blind, the Lord lifts up those who are bowed down, the Lord loves the righteous. The Lord watches over the strangers, he upholds the orphan and the widow, but the way of the wicked he brings to ruin." Proverbs, chapter three, verses twenty-seven and twenty-eight say, "Do not withhold good from those to whom it is due when it is in your power to do it. Do not say to your neighbor, 'Go and come again; tomorrow I will give it,' when you have it with you." Proverbs, chapter eleven, verse twenty-five says, "A generous person will be enriched, and one who gives water will get water." Proverbs fourteen, twenty-one says, "Those who despise their neighbors are sinners, but happy are those who are kind to the poor." Proverbs fourteen, thirty-one says, "Those who oppress the poor insult their maker, but those who are kind to the needy honor him." Proverbs fifteen, sixteen says, "Better is a little with the fear of the Lord than great treasure and trouble with it." Proverbs nineteen, seventeen says, "Whoever is kind to the poor lends to the Lord and will be repaid in full." Proverbs twenty-one, thirteen. We'll wait till next time. Thank you.
Barb Weiss.
My name is Barb Weiss, and I live at eleven eighteen Riverview Lane in Watertown. My pronouns are she/her, and I am part of the local group known as Building a Welcoming Watertown, first begun by four Watertown area congregations. We rise to speak because too many folks have been kept in the cold this past winter while the city has done far too little. With too many in the city you govern having frozen to death or come frighteningly close. And we challenge the frequent unwelcome message the city sends to outsiders. When folks find themselves in danger of freezing to death, that's on all of us. A little bit about me that might explain part of the reason. I grew up on a dairy farm about ten miles north of here. One of the things you find in a dairy farm situation, when it's family farms, is when there is trouble, it's the community that steps up. And that's what we're asking everyone to do. We're asking the community to step up and help when there is someone in trouble. And in that, when that situation, when people stepped up to help, we didn't judge, we just showed up. And that's what we're asking the city to do. Proverbs twenty-one, thirteen, "If you close your ear to the cry of the poor, you will cry out loud and not be heard." Proverbs twenty-two, two, "The rich and the poor have this in common: the Lord is the maker of them all." Proverbs twenty-two, nine, "Those who are generous are blessed, for they share their bread with the poor." Proverbs twenty-two, twenty-two through twenty-three, "Do not rob the poor because they are poor, or crush the afflicted at the gate. For the Lord pleads their cause and despoils of life those who despoil them." Proverbs twenty-eight, six, "Better to be poor and walk in integrity than to be crooked in one eyes, one ways even though rich." Proverbs twenty-eight, twenty-seven, "Whoever gives to the poor will lack nothing, but one who turns a blind eye will get many a curse." Proverbs twenty-nine, seven, "The righteous know the rights of the poor; the wicked have no such understanding." Proverbs twenty-nine, thirteen, "The poor and the oppressor have this in common: the Lord gives light to the eyes of both." Proverbs thirty-one, eight, "Speak out for those who cannot speak, for the rights of all the destitute." Proverbs thirty-one, nine, "Speak out, judge righteously, defend the rights of the poor and needy." Proverbs thirty-one, twenty, "She opens her hand to the poor and reaches out her hands to the needy." Ecclesiastes five, eight, "And you see, if you see in a province the oppression of the poor and the violation of justice and right, do not be amazed at the matter, for the high official is watched by a higher, and there are yet higher ones over them." Isaiah one, seventeen, "Learn to do good, seek justice, rescue the oppressed, defend the orphan, plead for the widow." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Megan. Okay, move on to reports.
We have licensing board minutes from May fourteenth, parks, recreation, and forestry minutes from May nineteenth, county commission minutes from May nineteenth, RDA minutes from May twenty-first, park, recreation, and forestry minutes from June second, public safety and welfare minutes from June fourth, and RDA minutes from June ninth. Any questions or comments?
Mayor, Starks?
Mr. Berg?
Yeah, if I could, on, on the park and rec minutes from May nineteenth, I looked at two topics here, which I just want to make note of on item number five B. They talk about Lake Victoria and actually also indirectly Hayden Pond, but they continue to make reference to it being a state type of issue with those ponds being outside of our jurisdiction, but John Kalibi and I will be coming to a public works meeting on the twenty-fourth to clarify that issue.
Okay, Mr. Berg, thank you.
One other topic.
Sure.
The other one is on B would be actually, let me look at my, uh, my letter here, B five. Director's report, they're making reference to project updates on parks in that particular minutes you wrote that was written there.
Are you looking at B or E because there's two park and rec?
B.
Okay.
Uh, the overall point is that they're, they're talking about Riverside Park, the restrooms, and, and the point I want to make here is that they're indicating that they are not going to be made available for Riverfest. And last year they were not available, which was a first in a very, very, very long time. Uh, they typically are available, and this year, again, they're making reference in the minutes that they're not going to be made available because of, they said, lack of patrol and cleaning staff. But in the end, they're, they're incurring costs by, uh, apparently having porta potties as an, as another option. Uh, and, and yet they're, they're saying in these minutes here that those, uh, that those restrooms are actually open, currently open, and they're available, but for their own reasons, they are choosing not to use them for Riverfest. And that is our chance to show those, I mean, they, they cost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars because before my time on the council, I didn't obviously vote for it, but I'm.
Right, so if that's something that you want Park and Rec to look at, then that's something we can get an agenda for them.
But I'm making the point now, if I can, Mr. Mayor, that this issue still does have time for them to rectify and clarify in a different way by, by using our park, Riverside Park restrooms and not going with a, a cost to Riverfest when we can actually have that amenity, which we already have, and we spent the money on. And they're saying in, in these minutes that they're available for being open. Why not show them off and make people proud of the fact that we've obviously spent the money, make them available, and, and the savings here would be significant potentially.
Well, Mr. Berg, which letter are you looking at?
B.
Okay.
It's, it's six B. There's a numbering issue in the minutes.
Yeah, it doesn't say six, but it's six B. And I'm, I'm wanting to just make it clear that I'm, I'm bothered by the fact that we're going to have Riverfest, which is going to, again, last year they said forty-four thousand people.
Okay, so we can, I can chat Park and Rec maybe look at that. Or at least.
Well, I'd like them to, and I'm, for the reasons that I'm stating here, that we could be using something we've got available. It's an amenity that we spent money on, and why farm it out to a, a cost through a porta potty, which doesn't really reflect well on our city, when we have an amenity that's what we've spent money on and is available? Show it off, use it, and save some money for the city and for, uh, the Riverfest committee by doing that instead of the approach they're proposing in here, which is to, uh, apparently not have tho- those restrooms available.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Berg. Mr. Smith?
I would like to echo the sentiments that Alderman Berg just presented. I know this has been a difficult issue for the city. It is unfortunate. We had a bad contractor and all of the legal machinations that have resulted from that. But I do want to state that I believe that there has been a tremendous effort on the part of the city to try to make those restrooms available. And through numerous committee meetings and other public forums, we have identified the goal of resolving those contract disputes in a manner that would make it most likely that they would be available for the Riverfest this year. I think the message that we would send is, uh, very positive because I have already been contacted by people that have been to those restrooms, are amazed at how nice they are, and appreciate very much the fact that the problems over time have been remedied. And to have them available at Riverfest would be consistent with the expressed intent of numerous reviews by our Public Works Commission and undoubtedly our finance committee. And I believe that the, um, citizens of Watertown would appreciate tremendously their presence during Riverfest. So I would, um, like to see the Park and Rec Commission, uh, ensure that those restrooms are available for this, um, upcoming Riverfest.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other comments? Okay. Move on to communication recommendations then. Try a presentation.
Thank you. Let me just share my screen. Need to go back to my presentation, though, and hit the presentation mode. There, I think we're good. Maybe not. You are seeing the full screen. Yeah. And that's not the screen that I've got up. Let me try and stop sharing and then reshare. There we go. Hi. So I know I've met most of you, but my name is Deb Ryan Bolden. I'm the president of Thrive Economic Development, also the executive director of Jefferson County Economic Development Consortium. But again, for those of you that don't know, all of the cities and villages, with the exception of one within Jefferson County, are all participants in and are all board members of Jefferson County EDC. All right. So when I say economic development, what really does that mean? Uh, you can see in this graphic here, it shows industrial development leads to a need for workforce. Workforce means you need housing. Housing leads to retail demands, and then infrastructure supports all of this. So I thought it was just a nice and easy graphic to kind of, in a nutshell, explain what economic development is. It really touches all of these different components. Also wanted to give an overview of the organization as a whole. Uh, so twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-one, we really worked on traditional economic development, and by that I mean business retention, expansion, and attraction. So that's really all that we did. And then in twenty twenty-two, our board came together and said, "We need to do more than, than just that." Uh, so in addition, we also added diverse housing as a, as a strategic goal, and activated workforce and trust and partnerships. Trust and partnerships was really, uh, something that was driven by Mayor McFarland, um, just making sure that we all work together in order to achieve our goals. And, uh, I think that we've done a great job of that. And then in twenty twenty-four, actually last December, we all met again, both boards, and updated this and changed it slightly. So instead of diverse housing, now we're working on place making, which expands, includes housing, but also expands past that, a workforce participation, and then also strategic support, awareness, and advancement. So we're going to continue, of course, to partner with everyone, but also just to bring awareness to the work that we're doing so that we continue to get investment and interest and development here within, within the county. And that has worked. Um, so as you take a look at this slide, over the last year and a half or so, there's a lot of announcements that have come into Jefferson County. We're getting a lot of good attention. So you can see Kikaman is there, really highlighted. That's a five hundred and sixty-three million dollar project, Astaland Bio down in Astaland, just north, well, you all know where Astaland is, but the old Valero facility, an Irish company, Klon Bio came in, purchased that, um, and are planning on investing five hundred million dollars into that facility. They've already invested over a hundred million and hired seventy-seven new people. And then in the bottom left corner is the newest announcement that we had. This was as of last December, an offer to purchase, um, by Jefferson County for Onegobio. So Onegobio, basically, they take the proteins from egg or the egg whites and turn it into a bioalbumin, which basically is a dehydrated egg white, if you would, um, easy terms. And, uh, it's a protein powder, so think of all the bakeries. That's a three hundred million dollar project. And so all of these projects are coming into Jefferson County, and we're doing what we can in order to tell everyone so that they recognize that Jefferson County really is a place that, uh, it's both geograph, geographically a good location, but also it's a, a place that's interested in growing and. So instead of diverse housing, now we're working on place making, which expands, includes housing, but also expands past that, a workforce participation, and then also strategic support, awareness, and advancement. So we're going to continue, of course, to partner with everyone, but also just to bring awareness to the work that we're doing, so that we continue to get investment and interest and development here within, within the county. And that has worked. So as you take a look at this slide, over the last year and a half or so, there's a lot of announcements that have come into Jefferson County. We're getting a lot of good attention. So you can see Kikeman is there, really highlighted. That's a $563 million project, Astaland Bio down in Astaland, just north, well, you all know where Astaland is, but the old Valero facility, an Irish company, Klon Bio came in, purchased that, and are planning on investing $500 million into that facility. They've already invested over $100 million and hired 77 new people. And then in the bottom left corner is the newest announcement that we had. This was as of last December, an offer to purchase by Jefferson County for Onago Bio. So Onago Bio, basically, they take the proteins from egg, or the egg whites, and turn it into a bioalbumin, which basically is a dehydrated egg white, if you would, easy terms. And it's a protein powder, so think of all the bakeries. That's a $300 million project. And so all of these projects are coming into Jefferson County, and we're doing what we can in order to tell everyone, so that they recognize that Jefferson County really is a place that, it's both geograph- geographically a good location, but also it's a, a place that's interested in growing and, and bringing additional opportunities. And ultimately, our goal is to try and bring in higher paying wages, higher paying jobs, so that our families can better be supported. So coming into place making, Habitat for Humanity expanded into Jefferson County. Actually, this Friday, we're going to be closing on our property here in Wat- in Watertown, on the Dodge County side, but we serve all of our communities in their whole. So we serve Whitewater, Watertown, and Cambridge as a whole community. So closing on that property on June, and in fact, Ben Waymire and I, who's also in the room, next year, we will be hosting the Habitat for Humanity Gala. We will both be co-chairing the event. So hopefully, you guys can, once we get the date set, we'll share it with you all, and hopefully, you can all be in attendance. Watertown Rehab Fund. So we worked, our organization helped to support the RDA with the $100,000 ARPA grant funds that the city had allocated towards working on rehab. So nine homeowner projects have been approved and two rental projects. I believe that there's still little over $10,000 left in this fund to help support rehab. And then we've also created what we call the Live Local Development Fund. So this is an idea that we had launched, it was May of 2023, so only two years ago, and initially came in with a $3 million pool. We're now up to $9.5 million and are working through another investor to bring us up to $10 million to help support multifamily housing development within the county. And as a heads up, we're working specifically on multifamily housing at this point, just because of the sheer number of units that we're needing, and also gives an opportunity for the existing, people who live in existing housing, an opportunity to move into something else. Right now, there's just very low vacancies within the county. We've got less than a 1% vacancy rate in multifamily, and only 1.7 months' worth of inventory in single family. And so just trying to add additional housing, and our goal is to add another product to help to support single-family housing as well in the next year. Workforce participation, we see that the fastest-growing population within the county is our Hispanic population. And we worked with the Jefferson County SHRM, the Society for Human Resource Management Group, and hosted a How to Hire International Workforce Conference, so that people can legally hire people from outside of the country. We had over 80 attendees, really well attended, and very well received as well. In fact, Jefferson County SHRM received what they call a Pinnacle Award, which is a national award. Strategic Support Awareness and Advancement. I've actually got a list here, just so that I don't forget anything. But our organization has updated our website. We've worked on awareness-building, community participation. So part of that is community reports, similar to what we're doing here. We also host conversations with Thrive. We do that quarterly. It's just basically an event where anyone is welcome to come and get to know our organization. So we've, the numbers on that, when I first started in my role about three years ago, we had probably 20 people. The majority of them were board members. Now we're up to about 50 people at these meetings, and it's normally people who are outside of the organization. Seeing 10, 15 people that hadn't been to a previous Conversations with Thrive event over the past year isn't unusual. We've got a lot of positive attention. We've also been working with the Every Child Thrives Transformation Council with the Greater Watertown Community Health Foundation. And Jefferson School District asked, asked us to help participate in their strategic planning sessions. We've been on a couple of different podcasts, including Fort Healthcare, talking about housing, and Discover Wisconsin. We've been asked to give presentations throughout the state. So the WIDA, best, WIDA is the Wisconsin Economic Development Authority, asked us to participate in the Best Practices Conference on their Attraction Panel. UW Madison, Grass Camp Center for Real Estate. 2024 Wisconsin Real Estate and Economic Outlook Conference, they asked me to be a participant and a panelist. South Central Workforce Development Board asked us to come in and present about the work that we're doing. Also, a number of rotaries and chambers, and then also, most recently, the BFW. Education Sessions, we typically host an education session every other month, so that's open to the public. The next one that we have coming up, we've actually got a slide of upcoming events, is talking about the State of the County, so that'll be hosted by Michael Lucky, our County Administrator. We host an education session on Bio Health Tech Hub, and I know this is something that we as a, we talked about last fall with you all, when talking about the, the property on Highway A and the potential uses for it. And so that was something that Bio Forward came in and co-hosted along with the Department of Workforce Development Board, and then also Site Selector. And then finally, Using Public-Private Partnerships to Maximize Economic Development Results is another session that we hosted. We had our annual meeting last year, where we brought in a corporate site selector and talked about, again, how, how, what they look for in citing their businesses, and then also recognition. So Bystimes Media has now expanded their service area. They typically were only in the Milwaukee area, going as far west as Waukesha County, but given all the growth that we've seen here, they've expanded that service area to now include Jefferson County. As a result of that, earlier this year, they hosted what they called Madwaki 2050, and by that, it means the corridor between Madison and Milwaukee and the growth that we're having. There were 350 people that attended, and in fact, they've come to us and said that was so well-attended and that there's a lot more work that can be done. And so they'd also like to host Madwaki 2050 again next year, pushing off Washington County. So all really good things. We also had a spread, a six-page spread, in the Site Selectors Magazine, Getting Saucy in the Great Lakes, talking about the Kikeman Expansion. And then also, the Kikeman Project received First Place Project of the Year for both small and mid-sized communities for Mid-America EDC. In addition, I should also mention that there are now numerous counties that have reached out to us, asking us about our successes and trying to emulate, using us as a model for the work that we do. So, again, sorry, didn't want to, didn't want to miss anything, but just wanted to give you a heads up. That's, that's what's been going on. So my next question for you all is really, what's next for Watertown? As I was talking with, with Mason, we've been talking quite a bit about where Watertown wants to be, and I know we've talked a little bit about, again, the Highway A property, and I know that's going to be going through a rezoning. And he told me that this could potentially be a good time. Hopefully, there can be some back and forth. If you think it's better offline, I'm more than happy to do that, but I think the conversation would be really good, because for us, what I'm trying to do is trying to bring you the projects that you're looking for. And what makes it really easy for me is if you tell me, I want, I want multifamily, I want industrial, I want, you tell me what you're looking for and what you're there to support. And if there's specific locations, I completely understand that. But it's a challenge for us to bring in developers. And then if there's uncertainty, it's difficult for the developers, only because they're spending their time and their money in investing in, in exploring a site. And we want to make sure that, you know, we, we're good partners and have a good reputation within the development community, and so just thought would open that up. Is that something you're open to?
Are you okay if they maybe ask you questions?
I would love that.
Or do that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So I'm almost to the end. I can just go to the end, and then we ask questions?
Sure.
So the next thing I've got here, the State of the County presentation that I talked about, that education session will be hosted on July 24th. Our next Conversations with Thrive will be hosted on August 13th. Exonia Bank is hosting that at Exonia Bank in Exonia. And then finally, investors. So these are the different private sector investors that we have in Thrive Economic Development. And then at the bottom, including our public sector investors that we had talked about before. And then, thank you, and again, thank you for all of your support. You all have been very active. Mason's been a great partner for us. But, open for questions.
Deb, with investors that look at our county, how do you help them look at a particular community as far as being maybe a fit for them? What, what criteria do you look at in order to help them evaluate Watertown versus Fort Acutson, or some other community within the county that you have a choice of?
Sure. So they really set, set what they're looking for. So there are some companies that have requirements specific to utilities. So Kikeman and Onago Bio, for instance, they both are very high-energy utility, they use a lot of electricity. So they both use about 20 megawatts of electricity, and the entire city of Jefferson, just to put it into perspective, right now uses 16 megawatts. And so as we're looking at our communities, if utilities are, are something that the company is looking for, unfortunately, Wat- Watertown doesn't have the capacity for projects like that, and we actually have contracted with an outside organization, a lobbying firm, Michael Best Strategies, to help to support conversations with We Energy, so that they will make investments within our other communities, within our We Energy communities. The challenge is that they've told us that they really only want to do that if there's a project on the line, and then it would take five to seven years in order to make those improvements. So if we've got a project on the line, they're not going to wait five to seven years, which is why we're advocating for more investments here. Other companies, it really is driven by the company. I don't advocate for one community within the county over another unless it's an existing, if it's an existing company, and we can get them to stay within their, that community. If they ask me to open it up to other communities, I'll do that with the goal of keeping them in Jefferson County.
So happy.
I, I was impressed by a number of things that have come through Thrive, Thrive or the Jefferson County recently. One of the ones that had crossed our desk from, you know, shared through the RDA back to, to all of us, of course, was the Residential Market Analysis by, by Tracy Cross. And there was a number of things that really sort of, I think, and this will be the, the heart of my question, but basically how, how it works with a $10 million multifamily housing initiative. But there, there are a few things inside the, the market analysis around, you know, the number of, you know, large apartments that have been built in like 2011 to 2024. There's a 13-year period with like seven major apartment complexes, and there was, at that point, our occupancy rate was below 1% on, on, on those things. It's also interesting watching some of the statistics that are gathering there, watching the, the, sort of the median mode, I'm going to get my, my math term wrong here, but sort of the average price of a new house creep up from 350 to over, to about 450 in just about two years, and the same thing with existing houses on 200 to 300. So again, some, some fantastic and eye-opening statistics on actual housing prices, actual rents, what things are selling for in this region with very tight occupancy. But I did want to circle back to the, the multifamily piece and just talk a little bit about how Jefferson County, how Thrive is using those resources essentially to, to make sure that we have affordable housing for the workforce in all of our communities.
Sure. So first of all, let me just share that anyone who hasn't seen the market study that was done, it's on our website, thrivee.org/housing, and you can go down, middle of the page, and download that housing study. And again, that was just done, May 20th was when it was released, from Tracy Cross and Associates. So what we did about, my goodness, I look at Ben Waymire again, so the Greater Watertown Community Health Foundation with Tina Crave, Nate Peters, and then when Ben was also the County Administrator, we all would meet on a weekly basis to go through and try and figure out how to help to support the housing development within the county. And what we came up with is this Live Local Development Fund. And what we, well, the reason that we did it is because, as you look at our neighboring counties, Dane County, Waukesha County, Milwaukee County, it's really easy for an investor to make those investments within those counties, because they've got a proven record and they've got higher rents. And so for a developer to come into a community, and by proven, I mean, we as a county haven't really seen housing development in multifamily since 2008. Even single-family, we really haven't seen a lot of development since 2008. And so for a developer to go through and get financing, first, they've got to convince investors that it's a really good deal for them to invest here, and then secondly, they've got to convince the lenders as well. And so for us to try and incentivize that, we created this Live Local Development Fund, where we can incent up to $25,000 per multifamily unit at a below-market rate. So we're basically tying it to SOFR. SOFR right now is, I believe, at about 4.3%. We're marking that up slightly, so we can create a loan loss reserve, and we're deploying those funds to the developers to incent them. We can, for a 100-unit development, you know, that averages, that's about $2.5 million that we could lend out, but it's up to a quarter of the fund for one developer. And so we're using that so that they can, one, use it as another equity source, so that we can convince them that, yes, it's, it's less of a risk for them to come here, but then also offering it at that below-market rate, so that way, hopefully, we can get them through the stabilization period for the development, and then, you know, add additional housing, and again, open up the single-family housing by allowing people to have another option for a place to live within our communities.
Deb, Deb, do you have a, sort of a, I mean, everybody's got an opinion on the topic, but do you know if, in your opinion, does, does the industrial and commercial bring in the, the housing, or does the housing bring in the, the industrial and the commercial? Do you have a, a view of which one goes first typically?
Well, so for us as a county, we've been trying to do it all at once. I can tell you that with the Kikeman Development, I've got a few people who are moving here for a number of years from Japan, and we have had a heck of a time trying to find housing. Housing is coming, but it's that executive-level housing as well as the affordable housing. It's all of that. I can tell you that wages and rooftops drive retail, and so we need higher wages, and we need additional housing and more people in order to drive that retail development. As someone who owned restaurants for 17 years, I can tell you what I really wanted is, is people in the, in the restaurant, right? As far as industrial, we need to make sure that it's a balance in that it takes, it takes quite a while in order to build an industrial development. It kind of goes hand in hand. So as Kikeman came in, as Onago Bio came in, we talked to them about the housing developments that were coming, and we needed to show them that we were growing, that we would have both the workforce and the housing to support them. So the businesses, as they're looking to locate within our community, they're looking at a number of different things, including, you know, can I have a workforce? Is this a, a community that's welcoming to us? How responsive are they? There's a number of different things, but I would kind of run them in tandem.
Okay. Thank you, Deb.
Great.
Ben, thank you for being here, too.
Thank you.
Okay.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Deb, if you want to email me some contact information, I can send out all nine of them, if that might be easier, if somebody wants to reach out to you. You could do that, too. Sure. Thanks. Okay. Next, we'll move on to Communication and Recommendations under B, Employee Recognitions. You want to come up first, Carol? Velma?
I am here with a remarkable person that works at the Health Department, Velma Stoudt. She has been working at the Health Department permanent, as a, in a permanent position for five years. She is our bilingual communication specialist, and she provides concasional, hearing, interpretation, and translation for all of our non-English-speaking community members, for all of our services. So our maternal-child health services, our immunization program, but our, our businesses as well. We inspect restaurants and motels, motels, and Velma has participated and supported those, as well as our emergency preparedness program. But Velma has been with the department, with the department five years prior to coming on permanently. She worked as a contractor and support person, providing the same services. But what I wanted to share with the community is Velma's dedication to our community. During COVID, we worked, the Health Department worked just about 24/7. We turned off the lights sometime in the middle of the night. Velma would have a family emergency, or she might have an emergency, and she would come into work, because she knew we needed her. She knew that families needed to hear from her, and they needed her support, and she came in. So her dedication to this community is, it's astounding. It, it really invigorates my entire team, and we're privileged to work with Velma, and the city is privileged to have Velma here for the city and the Health Department. So thank you, Velma. Really, thank you.
We have a second, John Duvernall. Has spent 25 years in our fire department. He's had both his kids in class, but he's been a scout leader and coached kids as well, too. So I thank him, I think he's probably working right now, but this decade, almost his entire working life to Watertown, helping the citizens of the community. So thank you, John. We could do it, all right? Just give him a hand, right? All right, move on to new business, committee appointments. I had a, oh, a gentleman there had reached out to me, I appointed the RDA, and it turned out that he's also a medical doctor as well, too. Carol approached me, she had a need all of a sudden for somebody else on the health board, and being a medical doctor, that's why he's on there for two spots as well. So kind of a unique set of skills there, so.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the appointments.
Okay, motion by Arnett. That's her. Go ahead.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lampy. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 I apologize, better do a roll call on that, that was wished before. Let's do a roll call.
Arnett?
Aye.
Mildenhauer?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Bartz?
Aye.
Blanky?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Miscellaneous business, payroll summary from May 14th to 27th, cash investments on May 31st, paid invoices report from May of 2025. Questions, we'll move on. Okay, next, I'm 10, license, licenses. There's a licensing memo that I counsel. Move on to B, application for temporary premises amendment from local waters, 109 South Third Street, manager Meredith Deggner on September 20th, 2025, during the hours of 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. for special event, Blacktoberfest.
Mr. Mayor, just a procedural question. Is there any reason why we can't do B through K as one single motion, those being licensed and going to be?
There's a lot of conditions on them.
We also have somebody that wants to abstain from some, too. We'll take them all.
Now move for B.
Okay, a motion for B, second by Lampy, okay. Any discussion on that?
This, this one did catch my eye, because this is the third year, I believe, of Blacktoberfest. This is a very successful event where Third Street is closed down, there's good cooperation between the establishments down there. It's always been a very safe and fun environment down there, and, you know, you've probably have heard my spiel before, hopefully a precursor to what we might do with entertainment districts in the downtown. This condition once again comes with letters from neighboring businesses stating that they need approval. Was this part of the last two approvals of this event? Yeah. That's my only question.
I believe this is the third year, right?
The requirement for neighbor approvals have been a requirement since the beginning of this event, yes.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Mr. and I, I think we can take H through K together, though, we'll get towards the end here. C, application for a Class B malt liquor license from Fiesta Los Margaritas, Chrysanthia Sanchez agent, located at 1512 South Church Street for license a year July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. Change from prior year business legal name, Chrysanthia Sanchez. Motion by Berg?
Second.
Second by Bartz. Okay. Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Mayor?
Aye.
Can you make sure the conditions are?
Oh, I'm sorry. So the next couple, the next four have conditions, so I'll lay a motion with that condition. Thank you, Megan. Yeah, we'll have to redo that motion.
Will the motioner accept the conditions recommended as a friendly amendment to their motion?
Who was the, that was you, Berg, first? Are you, okay.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Seconder?
We're good. Okay, so with the condition, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. D, renewal application for a Class B malt liquor license for Tequila Knights LLC DBA, Tequila Knights, agent Michael Martin, located at 617 South First Street, for license a year July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. Mr. Mayor, the condition as well. Mr. Blanky?
I make a motion to approve with the condition that the completion of the 30-day suspension imposed by the council on May 6th, 2025 is done in increments in no less than seven days to be completed by August 4th of 2025.
Mr. Brown, was that sufficient, I believe? The, could you, Mr. Blank, they had served part of it, so could you reread your motion again? Just making sure it's correct, because they have to serve some of it yet, that's why I ask.
I will move for approval with the condition that the completion of the 30-day suspension imposed by the council on May 6th of 2025 is done in increments of no less than seven consecutive days to be completed by August 4th of 2025.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor, that seems to happen.
There's 90 days, right? Okay, thank you, Mr. Blanky. Mr. Lampy?
The, the memo that was provided to us indicated that there were a number of incidents leading up to the suspension that we put in place. Have they been well behaved since then?
Sorry to interrupt, just a point of order. I'll go and second the motion so that it can be discussed.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lampy.
Yes, in short answer to your question, has they been quite well behaved? Great.
And part of it's been served. Second with Arnett, okay, any more discussion on that one? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, E, renewal of Class A combination malt liquor licenses, Class B malt licenses, and Class B combination malt liquor licenses, Exhibit B, have missing outstanding licensing requirements for license a year July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. Two has a condition. Mr. Blanky?
I'll make a motion to approve with the condition that any outstanding licensing requirements listed in Exhibit B are completed.
Okay, so I have a motion. Second by Bartz, okay. Any further discussion on that one? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll, we'll take the next two separately, yeah. Okay, F, application for a temporary Class B license for the Benzine Family Town Square Summer Concert Series event on July 18th, 2025, sponsored by Whitetails Unlimited during the hours of 5:00 p.m. through 10:00 p.m. for location 1 West Main Street. No more conditions, the rest, Mr. Lampy?
So move to approve without conditions?
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second by Berg. Further discussion on that? Okay, take a roll call on this one, then.
Lampy?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Bartz? Blanky?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Mildenhauer?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Next one, G, application for a temporary Class B license for Benzine Family Town Square Summer Concert Series, event on July 20th, 25, sponsored by Whitetails Unlimited during the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. for location 1 West Main Street. Mr. Lampy?
So move without conditions.
Okay, motion by Lampy and a second by Mildenhauer. Okay, any further discussion on that one? Okay, take a roll on that one, too, please, Megan.
Lampy? Berg?
Aye.
Bartz? Blanky?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Mildenhauer?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, I think we should be going to take the rest together, then. H through K, application for a change of agent from Lyons Irish Pub LLC DBA, Lyons Irish Pub, 201, 203 East Main Street, from James Bade to Carol Bowman, for license a year expiring June 30th, 2025. Also, application for Class A malt liquor license from Speedway LLC DBA, Speedway 4178, Kevin Canley agent, located at 104 North Church Street, for license a year July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. Change from prior year, Class A malt. Renewals of Class A liquor licenses, Class A malt licenses, Class A combination malt liquor licenses, Class B malt licenses, Class B combination malt liquor licenses, and Class C wine licenses. Exhibit A for license a year July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. And finally, renewal of second-hand article jewelry licenses, Exhibit C for license a year July 20, July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. Can they H and K together? Mr. Bartz? Motion to approve, all four?
All four.
Second by Mildenhauer. Okay, any discussion on those? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Next, L, application for operator's license from Maria Di Maras. If I keep going, Megan, read that part underneath. Do I have anything in denials or no? Based on category one?
Yep.
Okay. Based on category one? Okay, a motion by Arnett. Second by Blanky, okay. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Sorry, Mayor?
Yeah.
Since, since it was raised before the thing, were the specific instance of the denial communicated to the applicants?
I can speak to that. Yes, they were. A denial letter was sent certified mail to any applicant that would be denied. They are, they are aware. And was stating the reasons why, and how to come to licensing board to appeal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, looking at just L right now, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and M, application for operator's license from Amanda Pilsner, denials based on category one of the licensing guidelines. Mr. Smith?
I make a motion to deny this operator's license based on category one of our licensing guidelines.
Okay, motion by Smith. Second by Lampy. Okay, any further discussion questions? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Last, we have comments suggestions from citizens present. All are, state your name and address, and you have up to three minutes. The timer goes off, just express your thoughts, please.
Jeremy Schmidt?
My name is Jeremy Schmidt, 1011 Meadow Street, Watertown, Wisconsin. I represent building a welcoming Watertown. I've been recently elected as a pro temp treasurer. And we give you some stories of Watertown residents who have become homeless. I work in a nonprofit who finds housing for those who are struggling with homelessness or who are in a homeless status. Single mother fleeing the domestic violence with her child, living in a vehicle in a park in the middle of winter. Lived here more than 10 years. Disabled woman unable to renew the lease on the unit she's living in because her mother, elderly mother moved into assisted living, so she was unable to afford that unit on her own. Mother had over 70% of the household income. She is living in parks in Watertown. Low-income veteran household, given a 30-day notice of his house that he's been renting since 2000. Has been sold by the landlord, and the new owners want to move into that unit, so they have to find new housing. Disabled veteran living in his vehicle. He's been born and raised here in Watertown, Iraq and Afghan veteran, unable to find housing, struggling with PTSD. A young student, a high school student, becoming an adult. Two days after he becomes an adult, his mother leaves the state with the two minor children, leaving him behind, sleeping in hallways, stairwells, laundromats. Rents have, are increasing every day. Since I had, I got two adult children who are renting in town here, they have gotten, they got a notice that their rent was going from 875 to 925 for a two-bedroom. They gave their, their notice to leave, you know, they had support to move it back in with me. The new renter is paying $1,100, that's 20% increase. Incomes are only increasing 3% every year, while rents are going up 20% above fair market rent. We can't find housing for our low-income individuals, for our programs. Fair market rent for one-bedroom per HUD is at 876. You're going to find online, one-bedrooms at 1050, two-bedrooms, fair market rent 1122, those are going for 1,500. Can't find a three-bedroom. Low-income households trying to apply for low-income housing in town, Watertown East, Watertown Housing Authority, there's a two-year waiting list. We need a warming shelter so that your friends or families don't walk in the park and find someone on a bench not breathing. We need a warming shelter so we can fill the gap, so we don't find individuals like we did this last winter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Reverend Dr. Christopher Ross?
I'm Chris Ross, I live in Cottage Grove. Isaiah, chapter 10, verses 1 and 2 say, "Ah, you who make iniquitous decrees, who write oppressive statutes to turn aside the needy from justice and to rob the poor of my people of their right, that widows may be your spoil, and that you may make the orphans your prey." Isaiah 25:4 says, "For you have been a refuge to the poor, a refuge to the needy in their distress, a shelter from the rainstorm and a shade from the heat, when the blast of the ruthless was like a winter rainstorm." Isaiah 41:17 says, "When the poor and needy seek water and there is none, and their tongue is parched with thirst, I, the Lord, will answer them. I, the God of Israel, will not forsake them." Isaiah, chapter 58, verses 6 through 11. "Is not this the fast that I choose, to loose the bonds of injustice, to undo the thongs of the yoke, to let the oppressed go free and to break every yoke? Is it not to share your bread with the hungry and bring the homeless poor into your house, when you see the naked to cover them, and not to hide yourself from your own kin? Then your light shall break forth like the dawn, and your healing shall spring up quickly. Your vindicator shall go before you; the glory of the Lord shall be your rear guard. Then you shall call, and the Lord will answer; you shall cry for help, and he will say, 'Here I am.' If you remove the yoke from among you, the pointing of the finger, the speaking of evil; if you offer your food to the hungry and satisfy the needs of the afflicted, then your light shall rise in the darkness, and your gloom be like the noonday. The Lord will guide you continually and satisfy your needs in parched places and make your bones strong; and you shall be like a watered garden, like a spring of water, whose waters never fail." Isaiah, chapter 61, verse 1 says, "The Spirit of the Lord God is upon me, because the Lord has anointed me. He has sent me to bring good news to the oppressed, to bind up their broken-hearted, to proclaim liberty to the captives and release to the prisoners." Jeremiah, chapter 5, verse 28 says, "They have grown fat and sleek; they know no limits in deeds of wickedness. They do not judge with justice the cause of the orphan, to make it prosper, and they do not defend the rights of the needy." Jeremiah, chapter 7, verses 5 through 7. "If you truly amend your ways and your doings, if you truly act justly one with another, if you do not oppress the alien, the orphan, and the widow, or shed innocent blood in this place, if you do not go after other gods to your own hurt, then I will dwell with you in this place, in the land that I gave of old to your ancestors forever and ever." Jeremiah, thank you. Jeremiah, thank you.
Mr. Ross, if you could give Megan your address after your means done, so she can thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, good, thank you. I'll look for a motion adjourned then.
So moved.
Mr. Lampy?
I would second that.
Okay, motion by Arnett, second by Lampy. Okay, all those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That serves discussion, but, okay. Thank you, everyone.